Okay, we'll now call a quarter. The Monday office meeting first meeting. Jan?
Here.
Amy?
Yeah.
Bishop O'Sullivan?
Here.
Great.
Here.
Invitation is closed, we can...
Heavenly Father, we do thank you again for your blessing to this day, Lord. We ask your blessing from this meeting and all those that are here in attendance, Lord. We ask that you do with our council and our mayor that they do those things today that will benefit the citizens of LaDonia. Give us their... give them your blessings, Lord. They give us a personal time, in Jesus' name we pray. Good night.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and dedicated to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one saying, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, the mayor would like to do her announcement.
I have a request. When an item is put on the agenda, let the city have their meeting and you attend. And if you have more questions about the item, ask after the item is presented. Do not be calling people who are dealing with it.
What?
Can I have it in here?
No.
I'm surprised. An item is put on the agenda, let the city have their meeting and you attend. And if you have more questions about the item, ask after the item is presented. Do not be calling the people that we're working with or is trying to work with us. And you get information, that's not how the city is run.
Okay, now we'll go to the decision comments. Phil, Duffy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak and come here tonight. First off, I'd just like to mention the most... Also, I'd like to just say that anything I say tonight is my own personal opinion based on information as I understand.
Phil, can you speak up, please?
Phil, you hold the mic.
It's not on.
Make sure it's turned on. Switch it. No, up. Up higher. It's going out of our hand. Yes?
Hello, hello.
No, I find cameras working.
Hello, hello.
No, it's actually not.
Do you want to use mine?
Use your outside.
There's plenty of that for you, shawty.
Hello, okay.
Ah, there we go.
Now, the good news is you can hear me, the bad news is... Couple of things, I think a lot of times we just have negatives to say about everything. I would like to point out tonight that the reasons why notwithstanding, I think the city council hit it out of the park with their last two hires. These people seem to be very conscientious and doing a good job. Next. Next, I would like to ask the city attorney to resign. Because I just, I can't follow a lot of these things. It's like with this Hickory Creek, one, one, one meeting where we're going to be allowed to vote, and then the next meeting, based on some finding or some additional information, there's no vote. And then faced with irrefutable documentation from a citizen, that it seems to be that it's required to have a meeting of, 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 a vote of the citizens, then, then it gets changed again. I don't know who's responsible for this, but maybe we need to do some type of a forensic investigation of the whole thing and find out what went on. And while you're looking at that, we could also maybe check on the dismantling of the police department that we had. But as I understand, it was based on one opinion, and who knows if that opinion is right? If it, uh, next, if it does come to a ballot vote, I would hope that the city council would just make it a yes or no, plain and simple, a vote on, on the issue based on the documentation and the proposal that's presented. So everybody could read it and understand it and vote on something. I would not want to see something that has to, that says, to allow the city council to enter into negotiations with Hickory Creek. Because frankly, I don't know if the city council is really up to that kind of a thing. But if you think about it, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful plan for, it's a wonderful, this proposal is wonderful for Hickory Creek, if you think about it. What does it boil down to? And I believe we're calling it an asset transfer. But I think we could also call it a water system giveaway. Here we are, please. The Hickory Creek is going to get the, the whole water system, and what are we, and what are we going to get? Well, we're going to get Hickory Creek to manage it, and, and to me, I thought that's what the city council is supposed to do. I don't see where there are benefits to the, to the citizens by adding up... Wait, now, was that the three minutes based on when I first started? Oh, wait a second, there was a...
Y'all had the error. After sitting on a three...
Even thirty more seconds.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I would like to, uh, to say that this, this asset transfer, well, if it's such a good idea, I would, and I would like to ask that the city council members who are for it, do something with their own assets of a similar nature. Give it, give away your, I'd be willing to start a group to, and we could work on, you, an asset transfer between you and that group. Thank you very much for your time and the extra.
Russell, that one?
No, one laying down. Hello, okay. Uh, Russell dot four two oh two Bonham Street, LaDonia, Texas. That's my residence, that's where I live. I'm home every night, come knock on the door. A couple of things, wanted to say thanks to Jan Cooper for visiting with me yesterday and giving me a look at some financial information that if I begged for it and submitted a FOIA request, I might get it. But I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention, just in case you didn't take a look at it over the weekend. On the balance sheet for the water steward department, it shows that the utility fund checking account is a negative $30,000. Is that an error? Or is the report an error? Because either way, that's a problem. And I would ask who's responsible for the finances of the city, but I'm looking at her. So it'd be nice to have an answer to that while you guys are talking about it. Also, wanted to take an opportunity to say that I would agree with Mr. Duffy on one point, and that is, it's not transparency if I have to beg you for information. It's not transparency if I have to drive by and look at the bulletin board every night, which I'm happy to do, and happy to post pictures of that for the citizens of LaDonia. I'd have to create a virtual marquee that shares the information that the city should be sharing, sharing on the marquee. I'm happy to do all that. But I would hope that the city of LaDonia would take the minimal effort required, which is posting on the bulletin board and is required by law, posting on the website, and then take an extra step to put it on the marquee so that the citizens have good advance notice for meetings that they need to be attending. So thank you for sharing that information in advance so the citizens of LaDonia can take an opportunity to come participate in their government.
Pat Guess?
Hello. Hello, everybody. My name is Pat Guess.
Hit the mic.
Oh. Okay.
That one laying down.
Oh, okay. Uh, hello? Hello?
You're good.
Oh, yeah, okay. Hi, everybody, my name is Pat Guess. And I'm here because I'm interested in buying six acres here in LaDonia and off of Bonham Street. And so I wanted to submit just a proposal or a presentation of what we wanted to do. Pass this around. There you go. Sorry, actually have enough copies. It's just simple, we wanted to, um, uh, my company is Chicago Legacy Group, and we're currently building some container homes down in Commerce. And we're excited about the development of it. And we thought that this would, since the lake is coming to LaDonia, we thought it'd be a great idea to have something like that, just leave a lake so that people have a nice place to come, just to get away from the city, come here and, and come to this beautiful lake community and just have a place where they can stay. And so when the opportunity came available, we just thought that we would pursue this and hopefully that the citizens of LaDonia would like it also. We wanted it to be beautiful, restful, and have, you know, families come up and enjoy the lake and fish and all those type of things. I guess that's it. Pat Guess, Chicago Legacy. The, on the second sheet there is an elevation for the containers, so you can kind of get an idea. They are being built in Commerce, and you can also see on the website, containerliving.com, if you like, you want to see some of the stuff that's happening. We have a YouTube channel that kind of shows the development. So if everybody's interested and wanting to know what the containers look like and how they're being developed and what's going on, the website is very informative. Thank you. Uh, does anybody have it now?
Yes. Thank you.
Jan Cooper, one oh four Oak Lane here in LaDonia. I just wanted to address the marquee. I can't remember from years and years ago when this marquee did not keep the community totally updated on what was going on in the city and where it was presentable. So I would like to see that start up again, where we're, you know, updating activities, anything for the community, meetings. It's just like this weekend, also, we have a big event coming up on Saturday that hasn't happened in many years here. Where Black Tussle is coming through on Saturday, so we're hoping for a big crowd. But these are things that our community needs to know about. And so we're trying to get word, and, you know, Facebook does a pretty good job, but there again, a lot of people rely on our marquee for meetings of any kind, anything to the school of importance. So we didn't even welcome back our students on our marquee, that I believe. So these things are important to our citizens here, and I would appreciate if we'd addressed that much better. And also feeding fan, and it is not feeding fan. This is a very good program for our community that has been brought here, and it deserves the respect of being, you know, totally feeding fan and not feeding fan, and when the date is. We'd appreciate that. Also, with Black Tussle coming through this weekend, we'd sure appreciate if this City Hall grounds could be mowed and cleaned up really well. There's going to be a lot of people down here on the square, and I can't tell you how much we'd appreciate if it was looking immaculate and very nice for everybody to come and drink.
Banana bucket?
Mike, Dana.
Mike, mark it.
I know, just...
Okay, so on July 27th, I submitted a FOIA request. It is now seventeen days past that, and I still yet to receive any information that was requested. On around July 21st, there were some posts made on Facebook in regards to citizens' private water accounts that were specifically their audit history. That has the person's name, the lead has their address, and has their account number. That's not public information. Last two pages in that packet is directly in regards to the house bill that lets you know it's not public information. My request was simply, who made the request and who in City Hall gave out that information, and I'm still yet to receive it. These citizens have their information splashed on Facebook. And while I have no vested interest in the fact that it was not mine, it's appalling to think that any citizen in this town could have this happen to them. And again, we're still seventeen days out now, and no one has answered this request. Did you see from the Facebook post? The person said they requested it using a FOIA form. So how do we not have the information to turn around and answer a second FOIA? As to who requested it and who in City Hall gave that information out?
Okay, minutes are July 21st, February 23.
I believe there are a lot of corrections on these minutes. It's all right to speak on that. They're not as professional as they've been done in the past. I just think they need to be updated with proper names, our city. I mean, we're making a motion or anything, it's not like Grab made it through. It is Grab Morris, which is professional, which is very professional here, and not almost a, you know, proclaim basis in our minutes and documentation of the city. So I think before these minutes would be improved, that they need to be updated and more professional. And nothing gets, you know, getting done, I understand part of it, but it really need to be done. And it's, uh, because, let me see if there's something else. Yeah, also in the citizen comments, I believe we've done that, where the state, what the citizen referred to or what their subject was. And it says who spoke, but nothing to what they said. Anyway, I just think these minutes need to be redone, and it goes for not only July 21st, but like on May 15th. A lot of errors, or some errors, that need to be corrected, so on both of them. I would say that we table these, that your corrections could be made.
Well, there actually, there's several, uh, they need to be more professional done.
This is not how they're gonna do it in the past. This is not like professional. And they really seem to be...
And FOIA was what? Yeah, it's a tie.
Because she has a vote, so she's not participating.
The mayor's.
She wants to know, the mayor also...
The mayor's here, you're providing the review, so it's a tie, and she gets the cast of deciding.
Okay, carry on.
No.
No.
She's not...
That's what I was trying to... So she's, she's saying they're okay, the way they are. No.
She's saying she didn't agree with the motion made.
That's what...
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with simple changes. So we're just, we're just going to approve them as is?
Yeah, that's what y'all want.
All right. Well, I don't know if that's it. I think it is. What's happening?
Well, we, there, there was a motion made to deny them, and that failed. So you're still, but whatever's on the face of the issue, that there's nothing affirmative that's been done, you're still just like the old, I don't know. So you either need to pass them or, I guess, kind of the, whatever. But right now, all you've said is, we're not going to table, that's it.
Right.
Because there hasn't something affirmative been...
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes with the simple changes of last names being put on them. And I understand that's, that's a major change.
Okay. On...
For a second.
Living shit? Living...
Yes, yeah.
Others do what? That one you have with... Yes. I want to see how it passed. When it's on, when it's made, how it was written. So that we can do it correctly. Rude. She said so we can do it correctly, and that Jan had it.
That's also a wrong word.
Maybe the rest of the paper. Because it is... Well, I can see what, what difference is.
Okay, so the pass, uh, the motion passed, it was two to, kept broke the tie, and so it'd be through two. Okay, move on to financial reports, for July twenty three.
I had August. I had August. So I was, um... So therefore, I said it for July of... So I'll make a motion we do not pass financial report for July twenty three. Can you move the lights to please? Yeah, sorry.
I think it was.
I, is this, should this, I obviously...
Malice, malice.
So the financial report proved that the Senator Jena is supposed to be for August for July. Okay, on July 21st, the financial report made for June twenty twenty three, and the council's panel was for July twenty twenty three. That was on July 21st.
The balance sheet was for what?
It said that the financial report was for June twenty twenty three, and the council's panel was for July twenty...
It should be July.
So the question is, is this sheet for July or August?
It says August.
It said August of August.
I don't know. Then I'm going to make a motion that we don't accept. Can we get clarification as to what it means?
Well, we'll know again in August.
Oh, it's just a script.
We're going to have to...
We'll just pass it. We have to, everybody. No, it's not, because it's...
Yes.
But it should say, as I, is August the seventeenth, right? For July, but seven don't drop?
I'm guessing July the seventeenth. Uh, I don't have my, my schedule, so I don't have any...
I just read you what...
Well, I understand, but I didn't, I don't remember what you said, July, what date?
Do you know, July twenty three?
It was last one saying, it doesn't, doesn't actually say. So this would have been July 21st, that's when the meeting was.
Well, I have an experience with Jan, if we don't look for sure what it is, how long are we going to pass it?
Get an explanation.
Monday on July the seventeenth, what was in the packet was the balance sheet for July thirteenth, twenty twenty three.
I haven't remembered that much.
Which was July the first time.
Okay, motion's been made, it's going to take a year. But since the dates are not for sure of the balance sheet, that we table this till next month? I don't think...
What? I didn't hear what you said.
Since nobody's for sure what the date of the first real is? So we're going to table it till next month? What's your vote?
The balance sheet, I'm, I'm okay taking it.
Okay, council panel for August... Okay, count's payable for August twenty-three.
So what was about on that?
On the accounts payable for August were, okay, there was, um, payable for, then Mr. Hamilton. Uh, Mr. Hamilton had no charges then, expense for. This, this, it didn't have it down.
We didn't have everything from him, it wasn't the wrong email address.
And then, I wanna make sure, are, are we behind then on, uh, State Bank?
Yes, we're trying to find out, as of today, we're trying to find out, um, what is. I'll explain this the best I can. There is an escrow account in Bank of Texas for the water board. We've gotta find out how much is in that account to be able to pay, the company that is set up to transfer money. And so we do know that it is seventy-five thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. And we know the interest on the twenty-fourteen is seventy-four. That is for sure. We just gotta get verification on how to transfer it.
Okay, so the KS State, KS State.
No, this is Bank, this is Bank Texas.
Yeah, so that up there, the twenty-fourteen.
What's? The three fourteen?
Under the water, it's one thousand two fourteen forty-two.
No, that's, that's the excavator.
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm, sorry, I was asking about that.
I thought you were asking about the twenty-fourteen, twenty-eight.
No, I'm sorry.
Alright.
Sorry, but thank you for that.
Yes, State Bank, yes.
So we are behind. So we didn't, okay. So we're behind on payments.
Yes, but then, last meeting was before we had a chance to get it on.
And then we had no monthly charge for Patterson, or?
Patterson, um, I don't know what it is for Patterson, they're, they're so screwed up on their billing, that I don't know what it is. I requested a total statement, haven't received it.
Okay, only KS State Bank, it was on July, it was the count's payable.
Okay, and it paid?
You said no, because it wasn't on there.
I understand, I'm just saying, did it show, did it show that was on there?
Six nine eight dollars.
So maybe then this amount did not go through at the time they sent this out. As a total gap. Just love it. Um, Diane, you can clarify this. The KS State Bank shows that, correct?
Yeah.
And you didn't run check for July?
He did.
There are questions about the count's payable for August twenty-three?
Yeah, who's Michael Prince?
The person who is doing our water repairs at the moment.
And where we relate paying republic services?
Um. Uh, I'll have to go back to Diane on that, I don't, I don't remember.
So we don't have a bill this month for public waste and republic services? I don't want to say.
Yeah.
So we don't, actually only need, you know, have a list up here once.
I, I agree with that.
So that they don't get double paid at some time or another?
Yeah, that's kind of the way we got all the same TNT stuff, trying to get that straightened out. It is a mess, and same thing with TXU. It's a mess. Need to, um, actually need probably get the fire department on their own. Uh, Ms. Howard came in the other day and suggested that, so we need to discuss that at some time. Because that was another one that's a mess. They got this stuff listed in streetlights, it's the fire department, and it's a total wreck.
Um, I'm also just wondering, uh, the fire department, are they getting their, I mean, donations?
Picked up three checks last week.
On, on pass.
Yeah, one of them was pretty recent.
There's nothing on that house deal.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, then we were behind paying republic services.
I don't think so, right?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't shake shop, it was just on, la- last month it was on republic waste, and this place is on republic services. And that's why I was saying that it needs, it needs to be cleaned up, that it's on this one.
Uh, Patterson, there is a twelve thousand nine hundred seventy on here for Patterson for the repairs. But again, request a statement from South Coast. The way they send their bills, um, it's kind of messed up.
So you're saying not to pay those?
No, these, these are correct. We click out those, make sure on those, but it's.
These are mostly.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, check the account paper.
Okay, Greg is made a motion to, um, accept the count's payable for August twenty-three. Have you signed in that motion on my room?
Aye.
No.
Okay, information reports, utility, public works, document.
Just a second, please. Okay, utilities, um, we've had substantial water leaks. Uh, we had one major water leak. We had one, uh, behind the water, the wastewater plant that was, um, open-ended, inch and a half line, putting out. The way the water repair guys figured it, it's, uh, between seventy and a hundred thousand gallons a day is going out into the waste. We had another one, um, I'm trying to think that that was this month or last month, it was down on Shelby Lane. It was, but there was another one after that that broke again. And it was shortly thereafter, they had a repair in. Um, we had another one, uh, where's another big one? Sixty-four was a big one. Uh, Daxton Street ended up being a sewer leak. Uh, that has been turned into Patterson, so I don't know what they, they're doing about that. The guy we have doing the water stuff right now, uh, doesn't have anybody to do sewer at this point. But he's working on that, and, uh, so beyond that, I guess everything's been, been pretty good. We did have, when we had the power outage, we lost water, we went down to four feet in the, uh, overhead tank, and, uh, had to get, get over there and restart all that, so. Wouldn't have a timer too.
Okay, well, do you have a question? Is title street, that one, they said it's on title, is that due?
There is not a leak.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I was with the understanding maybe that Magnus might have been here tonight or something, but I didn't get that information, so it just.
Thank you.
So you're letting know that it's safe, Magnus?
We have let him know. But I will, I will, I'm going to Bottom tomorrow, so I will let him know again that it is ready.
Move on to everybody.
Jane? Okay, unfortunately, I thought, I think, about a report, Colin and I will be getting together on that, I did go to their meeting, and I do know that, um, as a community, we need to be supporting our apartment as much as possible financially. Uh, there's a lot going on with their vehicles over there, repairs and stuff. So as citizens in a community, we sure do need to support them as much as we can. Appreciate that.
Do you know the information?
Not really.
Diane, do you have anything? Okay, first for.
I don't mind, I just went to the city council person. That's all, public safety. We've got all the paperwork done, the city attorney's approved it, and council's got it. All we're waiting on now is T-Cole to come up and do what's called a site inspection. Uh, basically, they're gonna come up here and get Chris and the police department, say you're good to go. So that's all we're waiting on. I've got, uh, there's nine policies and procedures required by T-Cole. If they're all done, they're turned in, and, uh, other than that, I stand for the question. We're just waiting on T-Cole.
Is there gonna be a, like a physical, I'm, I'm behind on this, is there a physical location?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where's that gonna be?
Right here at City Hall, we have the chief's office, patrol office, and property room. We've also been designated by the county as a child advocacy center, and where we can interview juveniles here without having to take them to Bottom, which is really good for our kids.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, oh, business, um, May fifteenth, we're making this.
Just see some minor, um, things that need to be corrected, and I can't, uh, I just saw your delicious name is spelled incorrectly. Through it, uh, also, uh, down on citizen comments is Jason Egan. B-A-G-A-N, uh, that is correct. Let's see, um, we, uh, I know Greg gave his report last time, and there's nothing up here on that. There's one. How under new business, we're, uh, receiving presentation, we could create, uh, to discuss possible transfer. Uh, there needs to be, uh, no action, discussion, no action taken, there's nothing there. Uh, under new business, I, I believe that needs to be discussion only. Uh, under new business, I believe that needs to be discussion only, no action taken. And, um, the only other thing I see is under discuss and consider action hiring police chief. It says to hire police chief is actually chief of police. I mean, I know it's being...
We should be accurate.
With those corrections on.
I'll second the motion to, um, to peruse, to approve it with peruse made. Did you give the, um, the peruse decision? On my room?
Aye.
Aye. New business, Delta Mud, sale of surface water?
So that everybody understands, no confusion. Upper Trinity has absolutely nothing to do with Delta Mud. Has absolutely nothing to do with Hickory Creek. They're all separate entities, all on their own. We, under contract, are with Upper Trinity to, to have roughly 1.5 million gallons a day, give or take whatever, of water allocated to us. Delta Mud has asked if we would be interested in selling our surface water, which is the water we're getting from Upper Trinity, to them. And that's about where it stops. There has been no discussion, no agreements, no nothing. Just letting y'all know that we have been approached, and there is interest. So if there is more interest with the council, we need to set a meeting with Upper Trinity and see if they will make a commitment to make an amendment so that we can sell to them. Because at this point, this contract does not allow us to sell to them. We have to sell to someone in Fanning County. So I'll kind of leave it at that. No, no set timeline. It's just, it's just they approached us and asked us if we'd be interested. I said I would bring it to y'all, so there's no secrets, no holding back information, nothing. There it is, the one.
Have you talked to anybody?
Um, no, I talked to the Trinity. I can't.
I'm sorry, sir. I can't hear you. Or what was their response? What was the Trinity's response?
Uh, we were going to, they were with us in, um, the Delta Mud to get together and, uh, we will discuss it a lot. I told them we would be a boost for our, our town, but I understand that they have to amend the contract towards, um, like...
Yeah, really, there's no sense in, in reporting and talking with Delta Mud. There's no sense in having a meeting with them before we even have an amendment. I mean, we have, we can't do anything until we meet with Upper Trinity.
All parties involved.
So our meeting, our council needs to meet with Upper Trinity before we move forward on anything. We gotta have an, a commitment. And so far, they haven't been willing to do that.
Um, Trinity wants to meet us here. They want to meet with us in Red Creek. And they're supposed to be getting back with me because I'm going to reiterate what Greg just said because this really, uh, us first finding out if they're going to amend it or not.
So do we need to make a motion, uh, whether to, to move forward with having a meeting with, uh, Upper Trinity?
Well, we have to set a meeting, so we can do that tonight.
Do we want to move forward with discussing motion?
That's what I'm saying. We will have to, we'll have to set a meeting date. We can't do that tonight.
This is, we're just, we're just making a motion. We're just discussing and making a motion to move forward with this project.
I, I understand, but...
Not have a meeting.
But the, but moving forward means we have to meet with Upper Trinity to see if they're, they're committed to do it.
The mayor can call.
Well, actually, don't call me because, uh, generally, I suppose call me again because who's checking if Larry's in? When Larry's going to be available.
So, I mean, basically, there's no action at this point.
Basically, we make a motion to, um, get the, uh, get the information from Upper Trinity and Delta Mud and see as to when we can set a date to meet.
So is this for both of them?
To get every, all parties.
Together? I don't think that's going to happen, but you're welcome to discuss it.
Of Upper Trinity first?
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what Upper Trinity wants.
That's what Upper Trinity wants, that I think is, wants us to get, uh, Delta Mud and, um, you need credit.
No, it's council.
Okay, so you want the whole council?
All council, yes.
Well, in the beginning of the day, so you said warning is better for me?
No, you're not setting a meeting.
We're just a meeting. And, and after five, five o'clock, at three.
I'm pretty open most, most of the time.
What, when he calls me tomorrow, I'll just tell him. I have to notify, see, I always tell him after three.
That's fine.
Okay, the, uh, the hyper check with me. This time, you know?
Meeting. I mean, we actually have to schedule a meeting. We have to host a meeting. That's why I'm saying we can't do that tonight.
No, no, it's a date.
Once the mayor gets some dates, she can call a special meeting. Just the agenda is very clear that you're not going to be in the usual place. You're going to go somewhere else. You're going to have another meeting with another group, probably under the open record meetings act. So it's, uh, a lot of in parts there, but the mayor can call. When she gets those dates, she can, she can say, hey, we'll have a special meeting. Seventy-two hours notice, here's when I'm going to be. I think you're probably looking for some, some dates to, to meet with Upper Trinity and, and, and then get a special meeting, uh, followed by the mayor. That would be the substance of the motion. Make a motion to, um, for the mayor to get some dates and get back with the council members and determine a date for a special meeting for Upper Trinity, um, Delta Mud, and all the council.
I'll second the motion. Want to say it?
Aye.
Aye.
And create, um, take on simple. You called it.
I'm meeting by myself, but...
Okay, set a date for the budget workshop?
Yes, the budget's got to be done in October, so we gotta get started. Anybody got any idea when? Uh, hopefully, it won't take three months this time, but it does run a mess.
Y'all want to have a meeting next week, or?
We better get started soon.
Yeah. Twenty-eight, Tuesday first.
Um, Debbie, what's your schedule? That's it? Okay, what about in the evenings?
Every evening.
So you're home by 5:30? No, I understand. Uh, so six o'clock? Work? Six o'clock. And next Monday?
Okay, you're making a motion for the, for, uh, 28, 6:00 PM for a budget workshop? Debbie, second motion on my room?
Aye.
Okay, water leak on Payne Street?
Okay, we got a situation through the whole city, it seems like. Well, right at this moment, we gotta come to some kind of decision, I guess, on how much money we want to throw at this. Uh, we've already paid somebody to repair a leak, uh, at least twice. And they repaired one last week. And, um, and it's mandated. I mean, that's plain and simple. We've asked not to have any of those, but, uh, when you look at the pipes we have, this is an old pipe, an old galvanized pipe. And within a three-feet section, you'll have pipe that big around, down to this big. I mean, it's coming out everywhere. So, um, it's just the, the pipe. I mean, it's ancient. Do what?
He said twenty.
No, it's galvanized. Yeah. And, uh, I don't know how much of it is in the city. They were not able to turn off the water. Um, couldn't find a way to turn it off. We have new lines in the ground. They're with it. We've got gas lines in the ground with it. So to do anything with this area, you got to involve Atmos, uh, somebody to do the repairs on the water line. And, I mean, it's, uh, it's not, it's not a simple job. The problem is, we don't know where it goes. No idea where it goes. Um, I called Friday and tried to get with, um, KSA and see if we could get some kind of map of our old lines. I haven't had a return call yet, so I don't know if they're... I'm assuming they're working on that. Um, but we don't even know where these lines go. We don't, we know it's pressured, it's got water in it, and it's coming out of the ground, uh, which they stopped it for the moment, but it's not going to last. And so how much, how much do we want to throw it? Trying to find out, um, where these old lines are going and maybe getting them capped off or taken out or whatever. I think your house is on a new line, from what I understand. And, uh, there's two new lines that go down that street. Six-inch and, uh, four-inch, I think. Probably one of them is fire hydrants. And, um, so anyway, um, it's not a good situation, but again, we know what kind of water lines we got in the city. You know, again, how, how much do we, do we spend making these repairs? And we have to make them because otherwise we ain't going to have no water in the water tower. I mean, this will be out on the ground. So the guy that's been working on the water lines, which I think he's doing a good job, the work he does is warranty what he does. Now, the repair he made the other day, I mean, he, he put a clamp on it and stopped the water. There's not much of a warranty on anything like that, but he did a repair. He warranties it. We haven't had.
Ten years.
Yeah. And so, anyway, um, he's estimating a cost of $3,000 to $5,000 just to dig this line up and figure out where it goes. Because at this point in time, nobody knows. Again, trying to get some maps. I don't know where we're going to KSA. I have no idea what we're going to get. I know they should have maps on the new lines. I don't know if they have anything on the old lines. I haven't found anything. So, um, I'm just kind of, this is just kind of a thing. Hey, this is the situations we got right now, and, uh, it's not going to do anything to get worse. So we need to figure out what we're going to do. You know, do we want to dig this line up, $3,000 to $5,000 and maybe, maybe get it taken out of the ground? We don't know. Or do we want to just leave it till it starts leaking again? I mean, I, I don't really have an answer. I mean, we, we ran into the same situation on Taylor Street. It's, it's, they're all in the city. And the one on Taylor Street, was it actually going to a house? I'm not sure. I think it was going to that house there at the corner of 64 and Taylor, I think. But I know it's an old line too. Many times.
I asked Patterson if they would, uh, put it in. We quit patching and putting in the ice in, and he informed me that we don't have that kind of money.
And that's kind of what this guy tells them. He says, you know, he said, it's pretty good what they're on spending on. normal what y'all are spending on it. And so, I mean, I'm not, I am blaming Patterson for some of the stuff they did, because they, they repaired it, repaired it, repaired it, and then we're sitting here paying, paying, paying. But then, not only them, but then another person is doing repairs, and they're telling us what kind of lines we got. And, uh, I was under the impression that most of these lines got repaired or got replaced. Well, I know some of them on King Street did. I mean, there's new lines there. So they had to replace some more somewhere.
In these old, unfortunately, in those old old lines, they're back here.
They're worthless. I mean, really, I mean, you, you can't really tell what's what. You can't tell where a valve is. Nothing. We don't know where the, we've, we've had several phone calls of this stuff going on on twenty-four fifty-six. Nobody knows where the lines are. That's kind of where the Delk Mud situation came into play, because I went over to Delk Mud and said, I need to know where your water line comes into, goes out there on twenty-four fifty-six to the reels. Stops right there. That is the end of theirs. Actually, it comes into our seats, C C N a little ways. And, uh, we don't know where our line goes out there, and we've been questioned about that. Because there's several people that are interested in property out there. And very hard to give them an answer. So again, like I say, this was on here, just to kind of say, hey, do y'all wanna pursue this? Are y'all gonna say, hey, forget about it for now and wait on the next leak?
Well, and right now, on King and, um, Richards, and then on Richardson Party, it's a base on the bus route, there are seven kids that live down that road, uh, and, uh, intersection there is at least two foot deep in it.
Yep.
Where that water has just gotten
Eroded it.
Eroded it up from here. And then on the other one, it's probably about foot, and the bus can't go down.
Yeah, and, uh, I thought, I thought R. K. Hall would call today, but I didn't hear from him. Uh, we're trying to get some rock for King Street now.
I'll make a motion there on the table as far as
So, so, let me, let me just look a little bit here. You understand, if we table it, and we have a water leak, we gotta fix it.
We gotta fix it. We can't let it go.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm just talking about the boundary.
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying.
No, it's not to fix.
Right. So, I mean, we, we've run into a lot of these that
No doubt now.
If it, if it gets into, like this, if it gets into three, five thousand dollars, we need to discuss it. But, you know, some of these, we don't discuss because they gotta be fixed. They gotta be fixed immediately, or we're, we're not gonna have any water. Yep. Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Make a motion to just make a motion to
Atmos won't give you an estimate.
Oh, no.
So they don't know what, have the clues or what need they're gonna have to do. But you have to notify them.
I'll make a motion to do more research.
What you want? If you do more research, what do you wanna spend on the research?
Yeah.
That's kind of where we're at right now.
We just make a motion to fix, if it leaks again, have the water leaked fixed, and then just fix the crossings on both roads.
Listen, we don't need to do a motion for that. I mean, we gotta do that anyway, you know? We gotta fix the leak if it happens. We gotta fix the road crossing. I, I mean, to me, if you're gonna table it or later or whatever, at some point in time, we're gonna have to say, hey, we gotta make the major repair. You know, just kind of trying to let you know where we're at.
Might, might be a good thing to throw in the budget column, the budget.
Yes.
That you can get budgeted, some money for that specific thing.
Right.
And just, and just mandate it until you get
We'll have a budget workshop in town. Okay, so at this time, they'll make a motion to table the King Street water leak. On, favor?
Aye.
Oh, uh. Okay, uh, police department, laws and procedure approval. Okay, uh, water in the city, uh, water and sewer contract renewal?
Um, you should have a couple of contracts in your packet, one from Patterson and one from, um, my, my grand staff. They should be, it's probably right behind.
Oh, this is it?
No.
This? This apparently this is this is apparently
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. The first, yeah, the one, the first one's Patterson, the other one's Grand Staff.
Okay, um, so Patterson's age charge two twenty-five for after-hours for, he's gonna be charged in one at law? Yeah. Like four fifty per hour?
Okay, now, I do understand that, make sure before I say something.
Does he do water insurance?
Yes. Basically, his contract's the same as Patterson's, except he's gonna charge fifty-five thousand. And, um, Patterson, he is I don't even know if they gave us the total on there. I think it just says they're
Around sixty, maybe?
It used to be, but it's gone up.
Fifty-seven, maybe?
Yeah, um...
So he does the three fifty for first hour, two fifty per hour. After that, for Patterson, I think it's just, are they just doing two twenty-five for after-hours?
I say that. And second.
Maybe through Friday, two man crew using the excavator, it's two hundred, and that's the same as Patterson.
Okay, so those are for repairs.
Yeah.
But the fifty-five thousand is for what? The, the daily stuff?
So is it fifty-five close to twelve thousand?
No, that's, the twelve thousand is, is something different. Trying to find it where somewhere it says that Patterson's, it stops September first. I don't see it. It also says, these are the main processes are gonna increase. I don't see it. Nevertheless, right now, right now, Patterson is sixty thousand. And where it is, is contract due on September first.
So you're saying Patterson has warned their work, is this, these people?
A year. He had warned. Grand Staff warrants his work for a year. Yeah, but we have to tell Patterson on Monday what leaks we have so he can get a crew together to get to it as quick as he can. So far, Grand Staff has been on-site within a couple of hours. It says September first. This is a contract. Okay. I thought this was on here, but it's not. This is the email that he sent to the city. Did police see the new contract for Patterson Fresh and Services? The contract will go into effect September first, twenty twenty-three. Due to increased operating expenses, there is unfortunately an increase in the contract amount. There is no contract amount. Do you see a contract amount? Um, neither. So, anyway. That's where that came from. That was in the email, and I just printed off PDF. I thought it was on there. Okay, so September first, we don't have a contract with anybody. So, we, uh, probably oughta decide on something because, uh, we have samples and reports and everything else that are due September first. Michael Grand Staff.
Is he individual or is he, is he company?
He is an individual. And we have this been paid directly to him, so. Some of these things that he says that he's gonna do, I was just informed today, one of them was groundwater conservation district. Uh, Patterson does not take care of that report. So he's doing a couple more reports that Patterson does not do. I think he, I don't think Patterson flushes, or they haven't been, because we, I understand that it is T C Q regulations. So, and I don't think that's been happening. He will. Whether we use him or Patterson, whatever's decided, whoever it is, they will have to start building period. It's a T C Q regulation, so.
But he has crew, he's by himself.
Well, he has crew.
Grand Staff does. He's just been doing it by himself so far.
Usually, he has at least one other guy with him. And as I say, he, uh, the first time we used him was over at the football field at the high school in, uh, on a Sunday. And so, you know, look at that invoice and see what he charged to, to be there on a Sunday and see if it's fair or not fair or whatever, um, for the week. I mean, I think he's been more than fair so far. Now, we get him under contract, that might change, I don't know. Um, but I know some of the times he's been here, uh, he has not been let out in such. One of them was the big water leak we had on the backside. That's another thing. Um, the water tower or the water usage reports, um, are behind. The water tower or the water usage reports, um, are behind. Um, Patterson was supposed to be taking care of them. Um. Anyway, um, they supposedly got them caught up, I believe. And, um, but if someone was here on a daily basis like they are and didn't see that we were using a minimum of seventy thousand gallons a day extra over a month, over a thirty day period, um, somebody's got to catch that.
They did.
But they didn't. And so that was, that was revenue we lost every day. So, I mean, that's a, that was a major one. Well, you have reports you're supposed to reflect that mostly, I think. Yeah, whoever, whoever they have coming over here daily and, and doing that. And the reports, those, the paperwork that's filled out for reports. Yeah. But that goes up, that falls on, on another person. But within the same time. Yeah.
You had proof of last, proof of last name?
Yeah, he's an operator on the grid. Yeah, I mean, if, if he, if he contracts, he'll hang his license here. Same with the sewer. Patterson has been really helpful on some of the things that, some of the reports. Um. One of their people over there has been more than helpful.
Would he?
And I, I'd hate to lose that person, but.
Would it help for us to have Patterson University Council?
Realize this contract stops September first. I'm just, you know. And, and, and after September first, if they decide, hey, we don't want to do y'alls anymore. I mean, I think this other guy would fall in and take care of it. I think. He wouldn't have to.
No, he wouldn't have to.
You know? So. For one way or other, in my opinion, one way or other, we need to, we need to set somebody in place. Has to. Has to take all the samples. Everything, everything Patterson's doing right now, he would have to do.
Patterson's, I didn't look at our papers, I think I had two.
I don't think so. I think we still have some outstanding.
Okay, so what do y'all, was on the loop? Patterson would do a one month, two year extension, you don't think?
I don't know. Again, we're looking at September first, so if, you know, if we want to do a, a one a month extension, we, uh, we'll have to set, set a special meeting to decide on who we're to use.
I did know that on King Street that, uh, Patterson, who was on that water leak that we finally had called Grandstaff on? And it had been there for at least three weeks? And he did not fix it, but when Grandstaff called, he thanked him immediately.
Was it that day or the next day?
Yeah, it was. Cause I saw the man from Patterson personally and climb at the school and.
I mean, his response time is very, I, I, and, and don't, don't get me wrong, this can change to a second, but so far his response time has been very good. Now, you said something about that, and I was looking at something else. Okay, so he's also asked if he possibly could do an additional cost, uh, for a running system as like a general manager. Twelve thousand dollars includes finding all the meters, updating the maps, looking, locking the meters, meter change outs, taking calls from the public. Um, we'll have to discuss that because everything should come from the city hall. Uh, so we at least know what's going on. And helping with disputes and other water related issues. Working with engineers, contractors and developers to help maintain and grow Ladonia's work system. I have sixteen years, includes twenty-six at this zone. So now that's an additional cost, but, uh.
Does that be added on later?
We could add it on later. I mean, that can be added on anytime, you know? And I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming it probably pro-rated with the way that it's monthed or whatever. Um, but think about this also. He's going to find all the water. What's that worth? You know, I mean, we've got meters that we ain't seen in a long time. And we know we have meters that people have not been charged for.
You also got meters that you can see that we'd like to go and see.
Yep. I agree with that too. Yeah, we're going to get a hundred percent of it.
Okay, so what would y'all like?
Again, I, um, my opinion is, um, move to, to hire Grandstaff, contract Grandstaff as a September first. And at, at this point in time, why can't you say that we wanted this to the, the fifty-five thousand? Yeah.
Also a great motion to hire, uh, Michael Grandstaff. Um. For the fifty-five thousand right now, and we'll just, uh, see where that leaks from there.
You know, one thing, uh, he's going to do the DMR report, so it takes me out of the picture.
Okay, yearly audit contract.
Okay, um, I don't know if McClanahan has sent in anything or not. I haven't seen it, but they could have definitely been sending it to the wrong email. Uh. But we got audit coming up and, uh, again, actually I haven't seen anything from McClanahan. Um. So I hate to put a number on theirs, but I know what their number was last year. And, uh, it was more than double of what this person is saying he did it for.
This is accrual based?
Well, he does not do anything but accrual based. He has done the, uh, audits for Ladonia in the past. When Leon's here.
Did he give recommendations to you now?
Sorry? Sorry?
Did he give the recommendations to, what cities he's been?
He didn't. Why, he may have, I don't know. I, I talked to him on the phone and. I didn't, I don't think he had any. But I'm sure that's not a problem to get. Um. My biggest issue is he's twelve thousand dollars and the other one was twenty-five thousand. Twenty-six? He's going to give us the same audit and, um.
It's a pool based?
It is definitely a pool based. That, that question has been asked of him numerous times. And he, his answer every time is I don't do anything but accrual based. And he said, I used to do some of cash based, he said, I do not do that anymore. And I know he does several counties, um, so, and he's, I know he's told me, but the last time I talked to him was a year ago. And, uh, up until now, and I asked him if he could send an engagement letter. Um. But yes, it's definitely a pool based. He said everybody use, he has the loans and everything now, and he says, so you just have to do it.
I noticed in your sense, I'm trying to use a third party service.
Can't answer that. And again, like I say, I haven't seen anything from McClanahan, uh, but they could have definitely been sending it to, um, email address if that's the way they said. Prices way different. Know what it was last year? Last year it came down a little bit, right? From the year before, I think it came down just a little bit. Yeah, I thought it came down just a little bit. Sorry? He, he has told me some, but again, that, that was a year ago when I, when I first called him and asked him. And then I was told, well, he, that can't be accrual based, I said, I'll call him back. And he said, most definitely, he said, I don't do anything.
I almost like, even though we say it, I think we can check. Does your city's, is Francis?
Up to you.
I would want to do that before, uh, a special meeting that you will find out about with the ad. Find out some information on cities and then add that to that special meeting.
I'd like to see your questions.
You want to make a motion?
Now I'd like to make a motion at table. The yearly audit contract, uh, until the next special meeting.
Whenever we go, whenever we.
One you got to get information about.
Okay, Jan split a motion to table, uh, the yearly audit contract and going, uh, get a hold of some other cities. And then, uh, add this to the, you know, the special meeting that we will be having.
Yes, sir.
Line by her.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to skip down to H or, um, November's special election proposition.
Okay, this is the proposition for the special election for Hickory Creek. And, um. It will need signatures on it. Please be turned in tomorrow.
Is the language there in section two that says the proposition, is that actually the language that we'll be on the ballot?
Okay.
When he asks you about it, I'm asking you. I'm going, I'm going to guess that whatever's written down there is what they're going to print on the ballot.
So this was sent to the district clerk. And she said, yes, everything was good. She said it needed to be in Spanish, which they already had sent a Spanish one. And so she said everything was okay.
So how's it going to be listed on the voter, for the voter to see? Agree or yes or no, or?
I can't guess that. I mean, I don't know how they do that.
I would guess it has to be yes.
You know, sometimes I'm kind of worried.
So you've got to be careful with how it's written.
I'm saying, I'm answering that, how it's going to be actually on the, I guess, ballot that you're going to look at, I don't know.
That might be something you want to find out. Usually there, when they, when you have elections like this, there's a, you start before or against.
Right.
Whether or not this is actually going to be the language on the ballot, because you may want to tune it up a little bit to make it clear. Okay, but would that not need to be stated?
Okay, so, so we count them back up here. This is the whole of the election. This is not part of the contract or whatever. This is the whole of the election.
So after the election, then the contract's gonna be agreed on or not?
I think that's stated in their contract, is it not? You know what I'm saying? Originally. I mean, I mean, we know that there was some stuff in there...
But this was still in the contract.
Yeah, we know there was, that stuff in there about, you know, there had been a thirty-day period or whatever, for attorneys to make whatever changes they needed.
I think this election is just to, for the voters to say, we want the city to sell it, we don't want the city to sell it.
Right.
If they say, can't sell it, then you guys have to negotiate with that contract after that.
Yeah. See, even though, even though you, and I don't want to over-spect anything, even though you're, you voted in or don't vote it in, uh, if it's voted in, you still got to decide the contract, the end, the end result. You know, just, just saying, okay, I'm, I'm in agreement that we, yes, we can sell it. Now, if you don't agree with the contract, then it goes back to...
Yes or no?
Yeah, then it goes back. And say, well, no, I'm not, I don't like the contract.
Okay, so the bills or what was you saying when they provided?
I'm just, I'm, I know that that's gonna be the actual language on the ballot. It, it looks like this, says the transferring of events of the city of Ladonia's water system, ways water systems to the Hickory Creek Special Utility District. And I guess you could put for or against on there. They don't have to do that on the ballot or it's just a statement. So, I'm just, was concerned about that language, uh, whether or not you could answer that yes or no. And now, I guess you can, in that statement right there, so, somebody, that goes when they print the ballot, they have to give voters a choice.
Yeah.
Obviously, you can, yes or no.
Do you want us to call the next gentleman?
You too, wait.
I, I think, I think y'all have to take some sort of action on this tonight, because the, this, this, your timelines of calling these elections, and although they're called special elections, they're really not, it can only happen in a moment.
So, okay, just real quick, is there a reason for the outside? The ones that have water, that this would affect?
Absolutely. There is a reason, because they don't live in the city. And this is a city election. It's a county election, they're welcome to vote, but it's not.
I have taken so far with this.
I mean, I have it too, but, uh, I mean, she's already put this over.
People outside the cities that pay water bills.
We answered that.
I'm just saying the people that do live outside the city, that you have or water, do pay water bills.
But they, the whole point is, they don't live in the city. It's not, it's a city election.
No.
You have to reside in the city to vote.
But what were we wanting to ask earlier?
On this section two.
Oh.
So he answered that. I mean, this, basically, this is what everybody wanted, hey, order an election.
Yeah, I don't know. We're getting an election.
I wondered what they ordered now. Well, I'll make a motion if we accept the special order of special election, and we sign it tonight, so that can be delivered tomorrow to the district clerk.
We're not willing.
No, no. Delivered and signed for.
Okay, Greg, is my motion, Dixie, the order of special election? There be signature of that motion? Audit waiver?
Aye.
Your mom understands a little bit of the body, people type more.
But this is not, it's a city election? I mean, that's...
No, city service.
Yeah, the city services.
It doesn't matter about city services.
Okay. Just one clarification. Thank you.
And now we will go into, uh, poll session.
And, um, eight fifteen-nine. This is done to Alan G., you tell us five-five-one-oh-seven. Okay, we're gonna recommend a recommendation of position at nine thirty-four PM. Okay, I am gonna recommend that, um, we're gonna send out a memorandum of understanding of wasting confidentiality of customer rights, um, for utility bills. Be sent out to each customer. And from here forward, they will be, it will be added to the deposit information for the accounts. Jan is second in the motion on voting.
Aye.
I will return at nine thirty-four. With votes. I'll make a motion. That's my motion, any further consideration, all environments?
Aye.
I don't, this one is a...